Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Town Hall meeting for Single Member District One on Affordable Housing. We're gonna do a presentation this morning and we're gonna have some set rules on how we're gonna do this. First of all, we're gonna have city staff go through the project and kinda describe what's could possibly happen if certain things happen. And then, we're gonna have, are we gonna have the developer go first? We're gonna have, we'll have the developer go next. And then, we'll have questioning and answering session. When you have a question and you come up, we're gonna give, I guess, about two minutes to each person. We'll have you line up on this side, so it's a little bit different than a city council meeting, and you'll be speaking into this mic. We have to have everybody speak in the mic so that it's recorded on the video system. So, we'll go through this first. Bob is gonna go through and talk about what we did as a city looking at this project. And one of the things that I wanna say is that we had a meeting yesterday and we talked to the developer and we asked them about, because a lot of people have come to me and really worried about us granting the, or taking the fees off the table for them on their inspections. They're not asking for that anymore. They're taking that completely off the table. They're not asking that. They're asking for a letter of resolution on the pro-
For general support.
For general support, which we have two, the way the system kinda works, and Bob can go into this more in depth, but actually, there were a lot more projects in our region that were competing for these funds, and now, there's only four. There's four that are left, I think, right now. And there's two that are in San Angelo. There's actually another one that's in San Angelo that's gonna be, come before the council, I think, in the next couple of weeks. And so, when we're talking about the letter of resolution, what we're, what I would like to see happen is the letter of resolution will be given to both projects, the same, and so, they don't, one project, this project, wouldn't get more points than the second project would over there on that side. That's something that us as a body, a city council body, will have to decide together. I don't have, I only have one vote on that, so we'll decide whether that happens or not. Now, I'm gonna give it to Bob and I'm gonna let him start the program.
I think before we have the developer come up here to make his presentation, staff would like to address some of the key issues that were brought up at the last council meeting, such as the impact of affordable housing, criminal, the crime rate, water sewer, those kinda things. So, we're just gonna step through these, this little agenda, and then, we'll turn it over to the developer. Let me begin by saying that if you were to do a, conduct a web search on the impact of affordable housing on property values surrounding neighborhoods, you're gonna run across a ton of national research from institutions such as Harvard and MIT showing that affordable housing, if it's well-designed and well-managed, does not have an impact on properties, okay? Property values. Hold on. See, that's an assumption you guys are making, alright? We'll address that. Alright, so, I checked to see if that would work here in San Angelo. Okay, so, here's what I did. I randomly selected five properties near the Bent Tree Apartments on the corner of Foster and Sunset. I'm not sure if you know that, but Bent Tree is a low housing, low-income housing tax credit project, which is the exact same program as Valley View, okay? So, I checked the appraisal history from 2010 through 2014. And then, I selected five properties at random from the proposed Valley, Valley View project, okay? And I compared the two groups. You can see by this slide that, and the spreadsheet, that the Bent Tree Tax Credit Project had no impact on those property values. You can see exactly that those in red are near, right across the street from Bent Tree, and the other ones are not. The other ones are near, in the Valley View area, okay? So, it also did not affect the property values over there at Butler Farms, which is across the highway, okay? So, we don't believe there's gonna be much of an impact on your property values. As far as market saturation, over thirty-nine percent of the renters here in San Angelo are experiencing what we call a cost burden, and that is paying more than thirty percent of the family income going to rent, alright? And fourteen percent of those are paying fifty percent of the family income for rent. And we consider that a very high cost burden. That, and ninety-five percent, a occupancy rate of ninety-five percent on apartments across the whole city, tells us there is still a great need for affordable housing. So, we do not believe the market is saturated. At this point, I wanna bring up PD to talk about the crime rate.
I'd like to start off just by introducing myself. I'm Sergeant Cade Salisbury, and I'm the new Public Information Officer for the San Angelo Police Department. The chief, Tim Vasquez, regrettably couldn't be here today. He's had a meeting on the books for several months with other police chiefs in the area coming here during this same time period. And he wanted to be here, but he had that prior commitment. So, I did bring some information with me, so hopefully, we can address what issues that y'all have. I wanna start off by saying that of the affordable housing complexes that we have, such as Bent Tree, Nueva Vista, River Point Apartments, and Desert Shadows, on a, on a whole, we do respond to those apartment complexes more than other apartment complexes. Our calls for service are generally higher there, especially with Nueva Vista and River Point. Other ones, we don't, not quite so much. For example, Desert Shadows, which is a Section Eight-owned property, it has considerably amount more of units and people living there, and it, we respond there only, for 2014, we responded there sixty-six calls for service compared to two-hundred-and-ninety at River Point, and two-hundred-and-ninety-four at Nueva Vista, and a hundred-and-five at Bent Tree. So, what, what it really boils down to is how the property is managed. That property is managed better, they're making them stick to the rules more, so if they mess up, they're gone. We have a program called the Crime-Free Housing. It is voluntary. We can't force apartment complexes to participate in this program. We hope that this new property, if it goes through at Valley View, will participate in this. And basically, what that is, is it adds an addendum to their lease to where if they commit a crime, they can be evicted, is essentially what it boils down to. And the apartment complex, all they have to have is a police report and an evidence showing that this tenant did in fact commit a crime. And it doesn't have to be just at the apartment complex, it's anywhere in town. But what that will not include is anything that is basically he said, she said, that has no, no evidence to corroborate what they're being accused of. Of the affordable housing that we have now, Bent Tree, Nueva Vista, and River Point do participate in this program. Bent Tree went online with this program in July of 2014, is that correct? From 2013 to 2014, considering they only participated for half a year, the calls for service there dropped by, from one-fifty-three to one-oh-five. So, it does, it does help, this program does help with some of that. But again, if you look at Nueva Vista and River Point, there isn't much of a drop or a decrease, but again, that falls back to how the property is managed, and as far as getting people out that are out committing crimes. I realize that not everybody has what I'm looking at right here, but there is a website called CrimeReports.com. You can get on there and create an account, it's free, and you can look at the whole city of San Angelo, you can look at the area that you live in, however you wanna do it, and you can search by date, type of crime, location, and see what kinda crime is going on in the city or your area. Like I said, it is free, and it does, that is populated out of our actual calls for service. So, it's not a, it's not something that we're, somebody's going through and picking and choosing what goes in there. That actually comes from our calls for service through our system directly into this website. So, it is, it is gonna be an accurate representation of what, what is, what kinda calls we are responding to. And I would just, we also, I also have numbers for other apartment complexes. There's, there are twelve other complexes that participate in some form of Section Eight housing, even if it's not completely designated as affordable housing, that, beyond the Bent Tree, River Place, Nueva Vista, River Point, and Desert Shadows. For some of those, we respond to a little bit more than others, but for the most part, a lot of those, we still have very low numbers of calls for service compared to some of the other ones. So, that again falls into a management issue. So, I would encourage you, if you're interested in, in these kinda numbers, to get onto Crime Reports.com and take a look for yourself, so you can see, see what's going on. I'm not sure how far back the date goes on that, but you can see current trends of what's happening where you're living and where some of these, these apartment complexes are, so. But just, basically, we, if it's managed well, from what these numbers show, is if the, if the complex is managed well, and hopefully, they'll participate in our Crime-Free Housing Program, if that has a drastic effect on crime rates at those complexes.
We'll talk about zoning now?
Hi, I'm Patrick Howard. I'm the Director of Planning and Development Services. Just a little bit about the zoning regarding the subject property that we're here to talk, discuss today. The property is zoned Low-Rise Multifamily Residential, which is RM1, and that's, that's been in existence since the year 2000. That's when we adopted our new zoning ordinance. It was zoned, it was rezoned from Single Family Residential, however, to Multifamily Residential back in April of 1983, and that was R3. So, R3 is a precursor to RM1, and so, that's remained RM1 or multifamily of some type since 1983. And just, just by way of looking at the area, there are four other properties that are rezoned similarly in the area, not including the subject property. So, at 2695 Valley View Boulevard, there are some senior living apartments that's zoned RM1, that's the Myrtlewood Estates. At 2228 Valley, Valley View Boulevard, there are the Rain Tree Apartments. At 5014 Valley View Boulevard, there's a vacant parcel there at the northeast corner of Valley View and Westway Drive, that's also zoned RM1. And lastly, at 2604 and 2615 Southland Boulevard, which is the Southland Arm Apartments, they're also zoned RM1. And so, if the property were to be developed for Single Family Residential, assuming that that's the case, the minimum lot size is a fifty-by-one-hundred, so if you were to develop it for a low-density, single-family detached, or say, say a townhouse complex, you could build about forty to fifty units if you were to do that. So, that's just a summary of the zoning.
I'm Shane Kelton, Director of Operations for the city. In response to the, any traffic issues or increased traffic issues, both, both avenues, College Hills and Valley View Boulevard coming into that are made, called major collectors. They're actually designed to collect traffic from residential areas into a more heavily, you know, a street that can handle heavier, heavier traffic flows and lead us, lead that traffic into an arterial to get across town. We did average daily traffic counts. The, on College Hills, average daily right now is fifteen-twenty-eight. Valley View is fourteen-forty-eight. So, that's how many cars we have right now, traveling those two roadways on a daily basis. The other, other streets, same, same characteristics can usually do and carry, say Sunset, for example, anywhere from nine-thousand to fifteen-thousand cars a day. If you look at that, I think we're eighty-
Eighty units?
Yeah, eighty units. We shouldn't see five to increase five, six-hundred vehicles a day. Shouldn't be, shouldn't be any issues there as far as increased traffic amount. Don't believe that we'll see any congestion or any other issues stemming from that.
Hi, my name is Russell Pale, and I'm the Assistant Director of Water Utilities, and I'll be talking about the water and sewer infrastructure in that area. Currently, we have a sixteen-inch water main in College Hills Boulevard and in Valley View. We have done some pressure testing in the area just as of late, and it was about eighty PSI on the sixteen-inch main in, in College Hills and Valley View Boulevard. We did some additional testing within the residential area on the west side of College Hills, and our pressure tests were approximately sixty pounds, or sixty PSI in that area. And then, regarding the sewer main, we have an existing ten-inch sewer main in Valley View that'll be accommodating this. And based on the eighty apartment units, we'll be, we're anticipating, anticipating approximately twenty-thousand gallons of sewage from, from this eighty-unit complex. The existing ten-inch sewer main, you know, will be able to handle this amount of flow. And then, you know, any, kind of our standard protocol for any new development is to get a set of utility plans from, you know, the developer or their representative. Included with that, you know, they have to provide their anticipated demands as far as water demands and sewer, and if any, you know, if we see that any additional infrastructure is needed to accommodate for that, you know, the developer will be required to make those adjustments at that time. So, so anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you, staff. I'd like to introduce Justin Hartz from the developer's side.
Hi, my name is Justin Hartz with LDG Development. We're based out of Austin, Texas. LDG has about twenty-two-hundred units in operation, from anywhere from Sherman, Texas, all the way down to Alvin, Texas. And our proposal for outlook at Valley View is a project that we've been working on for around six months in the pre-design phases and working on the financing. So, I guess we'll walk through the presentation. This is a picture of the exterior facade. This is a project that we just built in Austin, Texas. As you can see, the exterior facade is a masonry product called Hardy Plank. It's a long-term exterior building product that we use on our product. And then, in addition, we always create a Texas stone facade to break up the exterior building layout. This is the proposed location off of Valley View Boulevard. As you can see, the parent tract is twenty acres, and we will not be using the full amount of acreage. We are planning down the road to do some additional senior housing that would, that would not be tax credits. Kinda walked through this exterior rendering with the actual comparable building product. Quick little summary, eighty units of apartments, total acreage on thirteen acres, that's less than eight units per acre, so very low-density, increased greenscape. The project will have one, twos, and three bedrooms. We'll have eight one-bedrooms at eight-hundred-and-fifty square feet, forty-two bedrooms at a thousand-and-seventy-two square feet, thirty-two three-bedrooms at eleven-hundred-and-eighty-five square feet, which are very large accommodating units per the other comparable units in the market. The proposed rents will range from four-hundred-and-forty dollars to seven-hundred-and-forty dollars per month. The total investment to the area would be actually nine-point-nine million dollars, which is based off of the praise value of the comparable product.
How about the other forty percent? Sixty percent will be at that range, what's the other?
Sixty percent average mean income. Building specs will be a hundred percent, stone and cemented siding, thirty-five-year dimensional roof shingles, fifteen sheer air conditioning unit, which is high-efficiency units, R-15, R-30 building insulation. Our attic space will actually exceed R-40. All units are equipped with fire sprinklers for fire suppression. All appliances, energy star rated. Every unit will have a covered patio or balcony. Laundry and dryer hookups in all units, and we build our product to lead certified standards, which is identical to a Class A apartment product. Our community will be gated and will have aluminum decorative perimeter fencing. Here's just a rendering of our one-bedroom. As you can see, it's spacious. We use carpet in all of our bedrooms. Our bathrooms will have tile surroundings, and then, we'll use a Wilson Art synthetic hardwood plank. Here's the two-bedroom. As you can see, every, every single one does have a balcony on the, on the exterior. Here's some other views of our clubhouse. Our clubhouse will range anywhere from eighteen-hundred to twenty-one-hundred square feet. The minis in the clubhouse will have a computer lab that the residents can use before school, after school. And then, we'll actually have a kitchenette and a community room that's fully furnished. In addition to that, we'll actually have a fifty-two-inch projector screen within a theater room. Other minis, such as it would be equipment, fitness facility, and this project will also have a balcony slash pool area off the back of the clubhouse. I kinda just walked through these minis from our clubhouse. In addition to that, which I didn't mention, we do have a gazebo with community grills, tot lot and children playground. Health and wellness classes, we do provide health and wellness classes to our tenants that are weekly. Moving on. Our product is safe and secured for our tenants. We do put an ample amount of lighting in our, in our parking lots and sidewalks. Every single building does have a security camera that we do record for over sixty days in our clubhouse, and then, it gets stored at our corporate office that the police department can use if, if we do have crime for some reason. And then, we do always offer our clubhouse for a police substation. If a police officer does want to use our clubhouse to do paperwork, they can always come in, use our offices. That's just an added benefit to the community. We will be using nine percent tax credits that are issued from the state housing agency, which is TDHCA. We will be getting a credit worth approximately seven-point-two million dollars. Then, we'll partner that up with a conventional loan of two-and-a-half million. Our project will pay city, county, tax row, so we're not exempt of any type of property It's pretty simple financing for apartments. Moving on, and that's basically our presentation that we presented to city council back in the last part of January.
Test one, two?
Sir, can we go back to that round? Screen. Thank you.
Okay, we wanna start lining up to take questions and listen to your concerns. To summarize though, over what's been presented so far, when we looked at this, one of the main things that a lot of people don't understand is this property was, has been zoned for an apartment complex since nineteen-eighty-four-
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three. It's been zoned that way. When I was looking at this project, and my frame of mind, to let you guys know, if I haven't talked to you, is that this right, this property is on the radar now for apartment developers. It's gonna be an apartment complex. It will, whether these guys get their deal through or not, within five years, there will be an apartment complex there, and the density could be much, much worse. In fact, I think, we talked about this, they're, they're asking for eighty units on thirteen acres. I think they could go up to, what, two-hundred?
You're good, twenty-five units per acre in RM1.
So, twenty-five times thirteen acres is what they, is what you could go up to in the zoning that's there right now. So, it could be, it could be much, much worse than what it is, what they're talking about doing at the property right there, right now. So, and, and again, this is one of those deals where the zoning has been there for thirty-something years. It is going, there's nothing, if, if they wouldn't be asking for the, the letter of-
Support resolution.
The letter of support, the letter of resolution. If they wouldn't be asking for that right now, they could go to the permit office right now, today, and file for a permit to build this construction, there's not a single thing any of us could do about that. They'd just have to follow the rules and regulations for building, just like all developers do. So, it will be that way. Everybody, if you have questions and, or you, or even comments, please just line up over here and we'll start taking those now. I know, I know there's people, 'cause I've heard them.
A couple of my concerns is the property values used were for 2014, and the increase, as we all know, is because of the recent oil boom. I would like to see some kinda facts besides just using 2014 property values. Other thing, we're getting free time from everybody else to make their presentation for, for, but it is not, there is not enough time in two minutes for anybody from this side of the room to make a presentation against. There's no way one person can come up here and get all their thoughts in in two minutes. You know, the, some of these people have bought homes during the oil boom, their mortgages are gonna be underwater, because this will decrease the value of two-hundred-and-fifty to four-hundred-thousand dollar homes. So, as Councilman, I suggest we reverse and get our zoning back to where it wouldn't be like this, to protect that fifty homes are worth as much as what they're talking about, the ten million on this deal, and, or more.
I don't think we can reverse the zoning on it.
Okay. Well, who makes the decision on the zoning? The citizens?
The person, no, the person that owns the property.
Okay. Yeah, the way, the way the process works with zoning is it goes to Planning Commission. Planning Commission will offer a recommendation of, for a change in zoning, and then, it ultimately goes to city council for the final decision.
Right. Well, another thing is, like I said, without anybody being able to prepare a presentation, we can't give you the numbers on what it does to the value of a home development that are hundred-thousand dollar homes compared to what it does to a home development of two-hundred-and-fifty to four-hundred-thousand dollar homes. So, we don't truly have a good argument from this side of the room on what it's gonna do. And the water pressure, I don't believe is sixty pounds over there, and I, they need to go way uphill and take pressures. Thank you.
When we tested that, you tested it yesterday, day before yesterday?
Yes, we tested that the day before yesterday.
And it, and it was right there-
Actually, you tested it yesterday at three o'clock at my house, and it was fifty-two PSI.
Okay, well, that may have been at your residence, but the, the fire hydrants were at-
What I'm concerned about is, at my residence, it used to be eighty PSI about three years ago. And as Champion Circle came online, the water pressure gradually declined. And in the mornings, between about, oh, seven o'clock and eight o'clock, when everyone is up taking showers and getting ready, flushing toilets and whatever, the, the pressure goes down to below forty. This is at the resident- This is at the residence, which is where it should be eighty.
The minimum state requirements are thirty-five PSI is the minimum pressure requirements for any water system. Eighty PSI is more of a luxury than a, than a need, but the minimum requirement is thirty-five. I'm not here to say that we don't have pressure issues, and there's, there are some areas that we can look at to improve that. And I'm willing to look at that further with you.
Okay, one other thing, right now, there's a big hole they've got dug in the middle of College Hills, which I know you know about. Okay, and you said it was an eighteen inch main.
No, sixteen inch mains.
I mean, sixteen inch main. I looked at the piece of pipe that they had laying there, ready to replace it, and it was only a six inch. So I'm just wondering, what's the discrepancy here?
I'm not familiar with what you're talking about.
Because I saw it this morning, coming through.
It could just be a lateral coming off of the sixteen inch main. The sixteen inch main is a feeder main, and then everything that comes off of that is either, you know, six or eight inch that goes within the residences.
Okay, I'm gonna change subjects and get off you for a minute. Okay, right now, okay, you're talking about property values going down. Anytime you infuse into a stable, a stable community, a lower income, I mean, a lower affordable housing units into that area, the whole area's value is going to decrease. Now, that's just pure statistics.
That's not, that's not a statistic.
No, no, wait a minute, and, yes, it will, I mean, it just does. See, I used to own a real estate investment corporation in South Florida, and I owned thirty, forty houses, okay? And if you look at it, as the lower income, no, that's a wrong term, the least affordable housing, you don't build into a higher end community, because it will lower, because, you know, you know, in real estate, it's location, location, location. Okay, now, if we put that in our area, the value of our homes are going to decrease. Okay, now, let's get back to the crime density. Okay, right now, anytime you increase the density of people within a specific area, the value, I mean, the crime rate will increase. Okay, now, like, compare the rural area to city area. The crime rate in rural is much less than it is in the city. That's because of the population density. And basically, that's all I've got to say.
Yeah, just to
I'm borough pringle, I live over there near you.
One second, sir, let me just answer or just respond to that. What, I mean, one of the main things when we're talking about this, again, I go back to, everybody, please realize that there probably will be apartment complexes there in five years, whether these guys do it or somebody else does it. Well, you can't ask for something, for a property owner to change their zoning, that, whoever owns it has to ask for that. That's right, you do, but you don't own this property, is what I'm saying. You understand, you understand that. The people, the people that own this property, they want to have the zoning up, because they'll get the most money. Okay, no, come up to the mic again. Okay, sir, I'm sorry.
I'm borough pringle, I live over there near you, and I don't claim to be a real smart fella, I'm just an old country boy from out here at Oregon. Talking about our water, I'll start off with it. Really, I'm not gonna ask many questions, I'm gonna make comments.
Yes, sir.
Back before we got a little bit of water last year, one of my neighbors had a water leak over there, and I told two city employees about it. The second one finally came over and looked at it, took out one shovel full of dirt, and says, that's the property owner's responsibility, got in his pickup and drove off. They sure wasn't concerned too much about our water supply. And I fixed the leak. Okay, back to problem at hand. Oh, I guess you'll figure out right quick, I'm not a Democrat. I'm getting to the point where I'm getting tired of us subsidizing so many people. Let them get out and work for it, just like I did. And quit giving American people so much. If they wanted a better living, quit spending so much on booze and Lotto tickets and everything else, and get their priorities in right. Let them stand on their own two feet.
Yes, sir.
I guess that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Karen Rustman, I live off of Valley View. First question that came up to me a while ago when I was sitting, listening to the policeman speak. Last meeting, the city council meeting, you said this was not going to be section eight.
It's not.
Well, then why is he giving us all the crime reports for section eight?
No, that was the section eight portion was just other complexes that participate in some form of giving some sort of, some form of discount or subsidy. Not that this is section eight housing, but just those were complexes that participate in some form of that, to give some sort of subsidy. They're not affordable housing, but they do
Well, FYI, don't put that in there again. I mean, only put what's gonna be prevalent to this property, please. I appreciate that. Second part
If, if he just did that, it'll be, actually, it's much lower, because those, I mean, you kind of want that, because you want the worst case scenario.
Okay, I just wanted the facts for that. And that's the reason why I asked, was this section eight or not? Because you had indicated it was not. Okay, this second question I have is directed to LDG.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, who will be maintained, I understand y'all are gonna be doing the construction, the building. Who's gonna be maintaining and taking care of the property once it's completed and residents move in?
We actually develop, construct, and operate our portfolio. So we actually hold all the units within LDG. We use a third-party property management company that actually is Capstone Real Estate Services. They manage twenty-two hundred units for LDG in Texas. And the average occupancy rate of our portfolio across Texas is at ninety-six percent right now.
In favor?
Ninety-six, ninety-six percent occupancy on our portfolio in Texas.
But Capstone is going to be the managing of the property?
Yes, ma'am.
And they will be in responsibility for the maintaining, the upkeep, everything that goes with management?
Yes, ma'am.
It will nothing be directly with LDG?
We use a third-party, so we actually contract them out to be our property management. Within LDG, we actually have a division, which is called Asset Management, that manage the third-party property management company that manages this proposed project.
I'm not, okay, I understand all of that. My question is, if there's an issue, someone from that property, who would they go to? Capstone or LDG? Because, I mean, if they're a third party, I would think just directly them, not LDG.
It comes to, it would go to Capstone, and then the lady that sits next to me in my office gets a direct call from Capstone.
So LDG, ultimately, if there was a lawsuit, is the buck stops with them?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Third thing, given the placement, and you're indicating that no matter what, there will be an apartment complex possibly going into that property. Most people that live in low-income housing usually do not have vehicles that are running or pass inspections. So they take mass transit, which is a wonderful thing for them and wonderful for the town. But have y'all looked at where the nearest bus stop is? It's all the way on Southwest and Green Meadow, more than two miles away. That's the nearest bus stop. I got it right here, if you want to see it. That's ridiculous.
Yes, ma'am, I would say the majority of our tenants actually do have vehicles.
None in this town, you don't know.
It's all, it's y'all speculation, our speculation.
Mine's right, yours wrong. Third thing, fourth thing. I have reviews here from about LDG properties in Louisville, Ohio. Your Falcon Crest Apartments, there is not one person that wrote a review. This is on apartmentsreview.com, that you can go on and read it yourself, indicating that the properties were maintained to their satisfaction, bugs, mold, rudeness, vandal, ghetto. Those are some of the hit words. I'm not saying that would be your case, because it didn't list Capstone as the managing, but it sure did miss, list LDG properties. What are you gonna do about that?
In Texas, we operate twenty-two hundred units, all of our units are decent.
Brand new, right?
No, not brand new. First one was built in two thousand and three. They are operated to the highest quality. On top of that, our investors require replacement reserve to be held in escrow to do any type of replacement on the, on the units. The owner cannot touch it. The end investor and the lender actually has to sign off on approval to actually release that money to the project, to do repairs, maintenance.
So you have an escrow account?
So there's an escrow account, replacement reserve, three hundred dollars a unit. On top of that, there's an operating deficit reserve. It's six months of expenses escrowed. On top of that, six months of debt service coverage for the permit loan.
My fifth thing, your property is gorgeous. If it was just that project and not low income, I wouldn't be happy, but it wouldn't bother me in the least. My big issue is these subsidies are gonna be going to those who are having difficulties renting a standard apartment, and they're getting a pool, I don't have a pool. They're getting a gated entrance, I don't have a gated entrance. And no one's giving me anything, so I don't think that should be allowed as a fairness. That's it.
Hello, I'm John Crowley, MD, I live on Champion Circle. I'm raising a family, I have a wife and three children, we live there. And my question is, in this low-income housing development, will there be any type of criminal background checks performed on people who would be applying to live there?
Per the IRS code, per the TDHCA, Community Affairs Housing Agency, per the federal code, you're required to do a background check on all tenants. If they're a felon, if they have any previous misdemeanors for drugs, trafficking, violent crimes, we cannot lease to them. If we also do get audited yearly by TDHCA, on top of that, our tax grant investor is claiming tax credits to the IRS. They come through and audit us every four months on top of TDHCA. So we do have a very high audit process, and we do, sure do not want to be non-compliant, because that throws us into issues with our investor. And that actually, we do a file out on all of our tenants every year with TDHCA. And if they have misconduct on our property, we have the right to actually victim, just like
So, so your answer to my question is there will be a criminal background check?
Yes, sir.
On every tenant. Now, does that apply to the children that are living there? If you've got, are they, is there anything to prevent juvenile delinquents with records who are on probation from moving into that housing?
Per law, it's eighteen years in an order.
Okay, so conceivably, a mother with three teenage children, who doesn't have a criminal record, could move in, but she could bring in two kids that are on probation, is that correct? As juveniles?
Yes, sir, but I would have to add the comment, though, if they're in misconduct, which goes with the parent, we would actually victim, because they're related to the leasing of that unit.
Next question, is there any going to be, having lived in Houston before, many times apartment complexes have onsite security guards monitoring who comes in the gate and out of the gate, and monitors the property for any problems. It's mentioned that this would be a gated community, will there be a security guard at the gate, twenty-four hours a day?
No, sir, we have gated entrance, so every tenant actually has a key fob, clicks it, gates open. When you exit, they automatically open up. On top of that, that's where we do have twenty-four hour cameras on our building, so there's not a, we call it a dead area where a video camera's not folding, overlooking that area. So we do keep that on record. And if, and, I mean, this is area, we've been through it, I mean, it's, per my review, it's, you know, it's not a high crime area, so
It's not a high crime area right now. Okay? All right, thank you for answering. Mr. Fleming?
Yes, sir.
My question for you, you've been elected to represent District One, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and I was wondering, have you spoken with people in the district? And what's your take on overall the population that you serve? And that's what you do, you serve the people in District One. What is your take on the percentage of the voters or residents that are in favor of this complex going in? And what percentage are opposed to it? Do you have a feel for that?
Well, not out of the seventeen thousand people that I represent, but overwhelmingly, the area there is against it. So I definitely would agree with that.
Okay, my question is, of the people that are present here today, how many, by a show of hands, are in favor of this project going in? Okay, all right, how about by a show of hands, by the people that are here today, how many people are opposed to this project? Okay. All right, that's all I have to say.
I'm Kyra Nestlech. My question at the city council meeting was, who owns this? Who's on the board?
Who's on the board?
Of this property.
Scott, Scott Allison and Lance Lacy on the property.
I thought so, thank you.
Wait a minute, what did you say, sir? Sir, that's just disrespectful, I wouldn't talk to you that way. Can we, can we have him removed from the I didn't, I didn't lie about that. Oh, who lied about it? I've never, I've never lied about who owned the property. Just leave him, just leave him. Why ask what? I didn't. Of course, when you brought, when she brought that up the last time, I don't know where she's sitting. But when she brought it up the last time, I mean, that's the first thing I did, was find out who owned it. But when these properties come, when these properties come to us, and I explained this last time, a lot of you weren't here last time. When somebody comes to us for a zone change or a building change, I never go to who owns the property. I go to who's asking for the zone change in the, in the process, and what they're gonna do. We look at their plans, and that's how we go through that.
You indicated that you had met with the broker, and y'all sat down
No, I met with, I met with their broker.
That's not what you said.
Yes, ma'am, that is, if you go back and look at it. Brandon? Did I say, Brandon is what I even said on the tape, Brandon.
We were talking, he asked you who owned that property.
And I didn't know.
I don't know, but I sat down with the broker and we discussed the property.
I did.
You did not indicate that the broker that you sat down with was LDG.
Yeah, the broker, I sat down with the, I sat down with all these two gentlemen.
If it was all that were here, you sat down with the broker that owned the property.
Well, then I would have known who owned it.
Exactly.
But I don't, I didn't. But I don't, I didn't. Go ahead and, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Um, concerning the zoning, uh, I'd like to know how many 250 to 400,000 dollar homes were in that area when that zoning was passed? Because I believe it was rural. Uh, I also believe that probably people could have chickens and goats and, and cows out there at one point. But our wiser councilman at one point decided to change that. Okay? There is a, there is a time for wisdom. And the wisdom is that at the point the formal council members decided to put something like this and allow this, that there weren't all of these homes anywhere around that area. So they looked at it and they said, there's no problem. There's a problem now. There's a problem because it's not, I don't, like I said, there's nobody had time to prepare statistically what it does to a, a higher home value uh community than it does to a lower value community. I had another question for, is it LBG? Do y'all have any of these in your, uh, within two or three blocks of your house?
Uh, yes, I live in Austin, Texas. I actually have a Section Eight project one block away from me.
Man, any problem?
No problems at all.
Would you want it built if you?
Actually, my wife and I walk.
Was it there when you bought the property?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you had, you had a chance to do due diligence. Again, I say that many people paid the top property value that has ever been brought in that area. And the city jumped right on that too. They jumped right in there and had everything reevaluated. They came in and put, raised all our taxes. Well, are we going to take all that back when everybody runs and puts a for sale sign in their yard and those properties drop? I doubt it.
My name is Sandy Lee. I have a question for LDG, please.
Yes, ma'am.
In Indiana, there is an LDG project there that was just foreclosed on for non-payment. Is this a record with y'all? Or do y'all do this and, and the whole state gets stuck with whatever is foreclosed on?
No, ma'am. That project was a project back in 2004 that the city of Indianapolis invited LDG to actually come in to do a rehabilitation project on a um basic condemned apartment complex. Um, it was a project that had problems from get-go. We went in there, rehabbed it. Um, to date, we have actually inserted millions of dollars to actually correct the problem. The foreclosure was actually insisted by the lender to actually do a workout structure of the project um to actually create the financing on it that was placed on in 2004.
You left the state of Indiana with an 11.7 million dollar debt when they foreclosed on you. We don't want that. And you're talking about earlier, a while ago, when you said that you will use Capstone and that someone from LDG will be sitting in an office in Austin, Texas, and they will be the first one to get the phone call, which doesn't sound like management to me.
Capstone Real Estate Services will have a full-time manager at the site with an assistant manager with a full-time um maintenance.
Will they live on premises?
San Angelo. Will live on the premises?
Yes.
We actually give discounts to our maintenance guys to stay on property. Most of the.
That didn't answer about the manager.
Manager also too get the same discount. So it's their choice to.
Do they live on there?
Most time, one of them do sit on the property.
Mm-hmm. Their choice. Thank you. Mr. Fleming? I hope from now on, you listen to your constituents.
Hi, I'm Jeff Portell. I live on Valley View on the other side. Um, couple of questions. Uh, you did a test at 3 o'clock on the water, on the water pressure S?
Uh, yeah, I, I don't know the exact time, but I.
Okay, could, could you rerun that at, at 7:00 AM? And uh, see what that is, first of all?
Sure, we can look into that.
Okay, second of all, um, what's the age of the septic and the water lines going through there?
Hmm, that's a good question. Um, you know, the existing, the existing, but all of the, the water and sewer are, are PBC, PBC lines. So, you know, PBC was not as prevalent, you know, but prior to 1980. So it, I would have to say newer than that. I have it, I have the records of it, I just don't have it right here in front of me.
Okay, because, you know, upkeep, you're going to have upkeep and so forth. And with those, you know, the extra uh volume that's going to go through there, if I were guessing, it's probably going to break.
Well, every.
Again, yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, that, that's why we're doing a, we're in the process of doing a rate study um to look at those different types of costs to see what we need to do to recoup those costs. And that, I mean, I mean, that'll be included as well. I mean, that's, that's where our, all of our uh infrastructure is repaired uh based on our, you know, the income from our water, water bills and charges of that nature, so.
We should have top notch with as much waters, or much water as we pay. Um, thank you, I appreciate that. Um, Mr. Fleming, um, just by kind of noticing what's going on here, I, I hope you enjoy your short-lived time.
My name is Charlotte Farmer and I live just west of College Hills, not in the immediate area. Uh, I, I kind of resent the water utilities person saying that they're in the process of doing a rate study to, to determine rates, to see what we need to pay for. We, the citizens, need to increase to pay for this subsidized property. Now, I do resent that. Uh, that's not what the rate study is for, in my opinion. But I do have some questions. Number one, uh, in researching some information in the last few days, the number of housing assistance program properties in San Angelo, I found that there are 32 properties already existing, some new, some old, that accept some sort of housing assistance program right here in San Angelo now. Whether it's the HAP program, which is Housing Assistance Program, whether it's the Section Eight programs, whether it's the low-income program or affordable housing programs. Those exist all over the city at this time and, and quite a few out in the southwest portion of town. Um, so my concern is oversaturation in the market we, that we have currently. And with properties, new apartment complexes coming online on Valley View, they're behind Sutton Link, out on Sherwood Way. There are considerable units coming online now. So my concern is overpopulating and then becoming barren ghetto areas. And I don't like the idea of one becoming ghetto. Uh, it also concerns me the construction of this property. And looking at your boards, your placards here, I have a concern right offhand whenever properties built out in that district residential homes are required four sides brick. And you have wood plank, wood siding with some stone, native stone around. And to me, it does not mix in with the existing standards that people have invested their dollars in out there where they live. Why should they accept anything less than the standards that they have built and purchased their homes on? That, that does concern me. I mean, you can dress it up with a swimming pool and you can dress it up with a gate. But the uh quality of the construction of the project should be nothing less, if you look at Southland Arms and their four sides brick uh that is out there, that was required by city code, city standards at the time that it was constructed. And so should this be? I would like some sort of answer as to why this isn't. Uh, you know, a suitable item is, to me, is not your wood siding. The other thing I want to ask is on the management of such property, whether it's an affordable housing. And by the way, you keep talking affordable, but the slides say low income. And there's a difference. There are different programs and there's a difference. So I would like clarification there. But on the management, your, your managers' salaries, I'd like to know, are they based on a, a set rate per month with discounts? Are they based on their occupancies? Are they based on their NOIs, their net operating incomes? Are they based on their police calls? I, I am serious. Now, a lot of managers' salaries are based on occupancies, which they'll cut corners, number heads in bed so they can make more money per month. I just am asking how you set your salaries.
We have a fixed salary. Um, I mean, on average, or the full-time managers make in $40,000. It's not based off of occupancy percentage or how many people they can move in per month. It's a, you know, straight rate. We try to keep our um top-of-the-line managers happy to the point they're happy on the property and maintain it well.
Okay, my next question to you is, how many people per bedroom do you allow?
Per uh, per state law and federal law, you have two per bedroom. And if you have a kid, you're allowed to have one um additional. So if you have a baby, you can have your parent and your baby in there.
Okay, how many families per unit do you allow?
It's per bedroom, so you can have.
How many families per unit does your company allow?
If you have a one bedroom.
Now, let me follow. If I'm a mother and I have a teenage daughter, that daughter has three children. Is that one family or is that two families?
That'd be one family. As a no-no, let's say back. It's one bedroom, two parents, one baby or one kid. So if you can't move in additional people, you'll be evicted.
If uh, my husband and I live in an apartment, a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom unit, our daughter with her three children come to live with us in that unit, how many families is that?
That'd be two.
That's two families. So how many families per unit do you allow?
Per unit, so there's one, twos and three bedrooms. So if you have one bedroom, you would have two citizens, 18 years and older. If they had a kid, they'd be allowed to actually have a child.
I understand the two people per bedroom.
So if you went to a two-bedroom, you'd do the exact same ratio.
I understand the two people per bedroom ratio that you're talking about. What I am asking is how many families per unit do you allow?
You would have one family in a one-bedroom. In a two-bedroom, you would have one family. So if you had more kids, you would have the exact same ratio.
In a three-bedroom, how many families?
You'd have one family.
Thank you. Uh, the other objection that I, that I'm hearing a lot of is the permit for the construction fees. And thank you for the company graciously saying that they're not going to ask for that anymore. But I want to remind them as well as all of the public, those fees have already been waived by the city. They were waived two council meetings ago.
No, we didn't, we didn't.
Yes, it did, it was a vote.
We didn't do the second vote.
It, it was a vote of five-two. The mayor and I were the only ones opposed to waiving your fees. But it was approved two meetings ago. Last meeting was the resolution and the resolution was postponed until after. Two different subjects, two different meetings. So I guess I'm in a quandary as now, is what are we doing about the fees since they were already prior approved and is in, in the city minutes? Anybody can go online and read them, that they were approved. And the other question is for Shane.
But were they, were they ratified?
They were approved at council meeting.
But they have to go through a second meeting, which that second meeting didn't happen.
Not the fees.
They're pulling it just like we can pull any of these subjects. Yes, ma'am.
Uh, my next question is for Shane Kelton. And you talked about your traffic studies in the area. I have to ask you, and you talked about the traffic down Southland, the traffic down Sunset, College Hills. Where do all of these streets dump into? What is their route to get to downtown, to where they work or to their shopping, et cetera, and so forth?
Valley View, Valley View will dump out on Knickerbocker.
To get downtown?
And then of course.
Knickerbocker, College Hills, Southland.
Yes, there's, there's.
Those are the only.
Valley View to Knickerbocker and then College Hills to the Loop 306. Or you could do, of course, you can cut across on Southland. You could cut across on Southland as well if you're going over to the mall or any of those. And the counts do, as you, if you look at the counts and you look at the ADTs and for any collector, and this is a major collector, and if you look at the ADTs as you move from the end where Valley View connects into College Hills, if you look as it moves towards the loop, it, it, it does exactly what it's supposed to do. It collects from the residential streets. And as you go, you can see your ADTs pick up, uh, average daily traffic counts. You see those pick up as you move and, and you start collecting the traffic onto College Hills. You can actually see those increase. By the time you get on College Hills at Loop 306, on the south side of Loop 306, your, your average daily traffic counts are ranging in the 5,000 to 6,000. And of course, you know, we have, there are some issues that, you know, we need to work with the state uh on the Loop and 306 and their roads, their frontage roads um all along that whole section, all the way from Knickerbocker all the way uh to Southwest Drive. Um, those are some issues there as far as the queuing and the timing uh to help relieve traffic at the Loop. But even on a major collector, a, a four-lane major collector, your um average, your average daily traffic count, even at five to, five to 9,000 uh is not, is not horrible until you start getting to, say, the Loop and some of those areas where your queuing times become an issue.
Okay, and my other point is, most of our well-managed properties, rental properties in town are, the majority of those are stakeholder right here in San Angelo owned. Folks that own them, they may have companies that manage them. So they have something in the game as they live here and they maintain a well-managed, low-crime-rate property. And so it leaves a lot of discomfort when there's an out-of-town group that doesn't live here and doesn't experience it on a daily basis. So that is, is of concern, even though I know it's zoned. Another complex can come in there. But it would meet the same competitive rights of any other business that is out there that is building uh properties at this time and not a giveaway. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Tony Wilson. I live on Augusta Drive. My dad and I used to have rent houses. And out of the kindness of our heart, we thought it'd be nice to make them Section Eight to help people that were less fortunate. And, you know, easy to get in. Well, in the long run, we sold those houses after about three years. And you can guess why? Uh, you said apartments only work as good as their management. Capstone Management, I did some research on them and they're 50/50. 50% good reviews, 50% bad reviews. In any type of housing that you have, say you have a, a, a single mom with three kids that moves in. She's trying to go to school, become a nurse, so on and so on. In three months, that girl has her boyfriend live with her and her boyfriend's brother and the house is full. That's what happened to our houses. Every time we turned around, it was more. That's based on management. If you have good management, it doesn't happen. If you have bad management, it will happen. It happens in every apartment in this town that has low-income housing. Most of them have over occupancy of each room, excess cars in their parking lot. If you have one family, one car's fine. But then you have all their relatives and stuff start coming in. Here's my key card, just come into the gate with it. That's all it takes to get into a locked gate. So that's what you've got to watch. If, if you've got good management, probably won't be a problem. But if you have the 50% bad management, it will be a problem.
My name is Fred Barnett and I live at 3021 Clearview, just around the corner from this. And um, first off, I'd like to ask the developer, are you currently bidding on any other project of this nature in the state of Texas, specifically this region, Midland Odessa?
No, sir.
Okay. Um, I've watched the January 20th meeting and I've watched the February 3rd meeting two times, last night and again this morning. And then I felt compelled to be here. In the January 20th meeting, uh, Ms. Farmer brought up skin in the game. She alluded to it just now. The developer stated that this project would cost $9.9 million to build. Is that correct? Okay? When the topic of skin in the game came up, you threw out JP Morgan Chase and you threw out Sherwin-Williams as partners and deals he'd made. And then you were asked, if this project goes belly up, what happens then? And you stated, we would owe $9.9 million to our investors. So I guess the question is, do we agree on what skin in the game is? Other people's money is not what I'm thinking. I think of breakfast, eggs and bacon. The chicken contributes, the pig commits. Okay? So it would, it would be nice to know, are you actually putting money into this project? Or you're working your investors and we move on to the next project?
Yes, we are putting equity into the deal.
Okay. You have a number? $9.9 million?
$9.9 million. So you'd be required to basically have around 15% into the deal on top of the investor money that comes in from tax credits. I mean, it's very similar to any type of, uh, when you buy, you know, a single-family home, you have to have a down payment. It's a very similar fashion.
Glad to hear you say that. Because the next question I have for you, would you explain the pass-through loan that you mentioned? And you said, it's crazy. I know, it sounds crazy. Explain that. Please. And you said, it's crazy. I know, it sounds crazy. Explain that. Please.
Without a chalkboard. The pass-through loan is very similar to a loan that our lender would actually take the loan amount through construction, pass it through a public facility corporation, which is, which would be a housing finance corporation. So if you're a housing finance corporation, you do loans to housing projects, similar to affordable housing, even some grant projects such as educational programs. They do the exact same type of thing, pass-through loan. It goes through the public facility corporation. That money gets lent back to the project, and that is a scoring item for the state.
Okay. The point system that you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, and I know you said, we've waived the fees, we're not going to do the $14,000 and so forth. But the way I understood it, and I watched both meetings very closely and took a lot of notes, the whole, one of the reasons for the relief of those fees was to garner points in the point system. Did you not, something along those lines, right?
You're correct.
Same as this. So it's based on points. That's what we're trying to do here. The more I looked at the pass-through loan, I'm almost, I mean, I come, it comes to mind, I'm thinking laundering money. We're gonna, we're gonna give it to you this way, have you wait five minutes, come back, and give it back to us, and we're gonna call that a loan, when actually it's not really that. I don't know. It sounds to me like it's playing the system to get the points. It didn't look above board. I was gonna make the suggestion before the fees are gonna be waived, that maybe we could do the pass-through loan on the $14,000. You just give it to us. And two weeks later, we say, you don't have to pay those fees.
That's another, that's another option. I mean, we're paying taxes and, you know.
I kinda said that tongue-in-cheek, because I don't think that's ethical.
There's a lot of structures you can do, and it's just, you know, I'll let your comment be.
Okay. And then Rodney, I just have one thing for you. You'd mentioned at the last meeting, the citizens have a responsibility to know what's on the agenda and then respond appropriately. I have the January 20th agenda, and if you remember, that was a very long meeting. You spend a lot of time on frac sand. The time on YouTube is four hours and 10 minutes. At about four hours of that meeting, not including breaks, not including executive session, whatever else happened, this item finally came up, and all it says is, "Consideration to approve waiving permit and application fees associated with construction of a low-income housing tax credit project by LDG Development to construct affordable housing apartments in San Angelo." I'm with you. I have no idea why these people had no idea that they shouldn't show up. Okay? It's number 16 out of 20 after four hours plus. And so I don't appreciate you putting that on the citizens. But, you know, I feel like you owe us an obligation to put that information out there. It was asked at the January 20th meeting, Ms. Farmer brought it up. It's come up that she knew about this back the first of January. Did you get a letter related to this in January through the city, the letter she mentioned?
We all got the same letter.
Okay. And, I mean, I don't understand why there's, there was any effort on your part to bring this to the forefront a lot sooner. And then to turn around in February and claim that it's the citizens' responsibility, that's not a very good definition of what was, what's actually going on here. And so the last thing I'll say is I watched those meetings, and Mr. Morrison and Ms. Farmer both, we've been through this just last year. I was involved in that one too on Sherwood Way. It's not new. We just went through this, and you're aware of that situation. And they both said, oh, we do a town hall meeting, you better get ready. These people, they come, they're passionate. And your answer was, yeah, under, I don't know if everybody heard it, but if you watch it on YouTube, you said, Dwayne, send them to me. Here we are.
Yeah.
Hi, my name's Lillian Russell, and one of the questions is, is why all of a sudden you want to waive these fees?
We're not, we're not doing, we're not.
I know, but you, we were, you were going to waive them. Now, why all of a sudden do they not want to, do they want to pay that fee? Why do they, all of a sudden, they want to pay that fee?
You're gonna have to ask them that.
I'm asking.
You know, I kind of. I waived the fee on top of the waive, so I, you know, did away with that request.
Was it because so many of us objected to those fees?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay.
And, you know, it's back to, it's point scoring, so.
So you felt like if you waived those fees, we'd all be for it?
No, ma'am.
Well, we're not for it. And another question I have, College Hills goes straight into Valley View and then it curves. Is that property going to be right there at that entrance? Are they gonna extend Valley View, or how's that traffic gonna work?
That stop sign is right there.
You run dead end.
Are you asking where the gate is gonna be, kind of?
Yes, when you, are, yes, are you going to drive straight into your property that we don't want built, or is you gonna extend Valley View to make it a straight-through street?
This road eventually goes straight through, so it's not straight in.
You, you drive straight through and then you have to curve into Valley View?
So.
Are you gonna extend that to the right to make Valley View straight through?
I think this is an answer actually for Patrick. That road is.
The master plan is for the, the master plan is for that road to continue going straight, I believe.
Well, it can't go straight. You've got a train track, and that'll be the next question.
It can go down, and there's gonna end up being another road going, or road or two going off, to the right. Yes, ma'am.
Which would be extended to Valley View. Because when you look at the sign, it says 2,700 block of Valley View, and then you've got 3,100, 3,100 block of Clearview.
Does that, does that help answer that question?
No, you haven't answered it yet.
That.
You're gonna extend Valley View to the right.
Right. The developer plans on accessing the property off Valley View. What the councilman was referring to is on the master thoroughfare plan. There are projections about extension of South College Hills Boulevard, but that's, that's into the future. As it relates to the development being proposed, the access would be off the existing Valley View Boulevard.
So it still would just run and then curve?
Yes, ma'am.
And what about the train track? It is so close to the train track. What about these families and these children with the train?
Well, per the railroad.
How far is your property gonna be away from that train track?
Ma'am, we are actually coming off 100 feet off of the railroad easement. So a railroad easement, I think, is by state law, 150 feet.
150 feet.
So it would be 250 feet to our property line. Then we would actually have a parking lot, and then we would have residential building. On top of that, we do build with quiet truss, and we do have R-15 and R-30 wall assembly. So it is, we meet the decibel requirements for, you know, least certified built project.
To 250 feet away from.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Lisa Hill, and I also live very close to the property, within an easy viewing distance. And I just, first of all, want to say thank you for this town hall meeting. I want to say thank you very much for doing it. We didn't have actual or constructive knowledge, really, that this was gonna happen. And I hope you see all these people in the room. This has probably been somewhat painful for you. And this is public discourse. This will make the project better. Even if it feels painful for you and it is time-consuming, this will make this project better if it happens. We may get some concessions from the developer. You may, and I hope you see this room as two or 300 tax-paying concerned citizens. That's a good thing, not a bad thing. So I hope, I want to say thank you.
And one thing, let me answer that. Because of this process on this piece of property, we are doing a change internally on how all these, these things are coming forward from, because we have another one of these coming forward on the north side of town, and I think in two weeks? Two, two to four weeks. And right off the bat, we're going to have a town hall meeting before it gets to the council meeting. So this is something that's all new, it's for sure new to me. And this is the way they're gonna try to do it from now on. So I'm really glad that we are setting precedence on how all these need to take place in the, in the, in the beginning.
Because we do take good care of our homes, and we want them to look nice, and that's why we're here. Not because we don't care about low-income people. Many of us, if not a good majority of us in the room, may have started out as someone without very much income and worked hard to have a nice house. And so we just want to take care of our neighborhood, and I hope you think that's a good thing. I have a couple of quick questions. You indicated that it's, or Mr. Howard did, that it was zoned for low-rise multifamily homes. Is a three-story building considered low-rise?
The plan, the plan for the developers to do, is it all two-story, two-story development? So when you talk about low-rise, yes, you're talking about one to three stories.
There's no problem with that with our airport or anything like that, a three-story building right there? What is the definition of low-rise? That might be a better question. Does anybody know?
Well, it depends on the area. I mean, a low-rise in Washington DC would be different from a low-rise in San Angelo. So what we typically look at is a low-rise building being one to three stories, mid-rise, three to six stories, and we don't really see too many high-rises here in San Angelo. But again, it's, it's area-specific. There's no, it depends on the city and how they determine what they believe is high-rise versus low-rise. But generally, it's, again, context-sensitive. So here we, we're talking about one to three stories as far as a low-rise building.
Okay. I have a question about the slide that the developer showed that said 60%, and it had an acronym there, and I didn't know what it stood for. I think a lot of us in the room have very big questions. We don't understand the program by which someone gets subsidized housing. So it said 60% of something. Does that mean 60% of the residents get a subsidy, or is it?
It's 60% average median income. So.
For this area, how much money someone makes for this area, it's 60% of that.
So then they would qualify for the program?
Correct. So for instance, in 2014, four-person median, sorry, person median family income is $56,100.
So when they, so if they made less than $56,000, they would qualify to live there. Is that right?
60% of that, so I'll, so a four-person, exact same for four-person family income, 60% of $56,100 would be $33,660. So that, their income, if they were at or below that, they would qualify for this project.
Thank you. So if someone qual.
I'm sorry, I know it's.
I know, it's very confusing. So if someone qualifies then, how does, how exactly does the rent subsidy work? Do they pay a portion of their rent?
So there's, there's no rent subsidy. So they, they pay the rent, they pay the utilities, they pay everything. So there's no subsidy to the tenant. It's just a discounted rent.
So how do you make money on the project then?
I make the money because I'm operating the project.
And you get money from somewhere else?
From the project. So when we get rent, and we pay off our mortgages and our expenses and everything else, which is net operating income, that's how.
And the rent, the money from the project that you just mentioned comes from TDHCA? What does that stand for?
Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. They issue the tax credits, which come down from HUD, and then goes to the state. They're the sub-recipient. They issue the credits.
You mentioned in one of your slides that it has ample parking. And one of the things that a lot of people have brought up here, and we did, I did some research on this, and it does look to be true, that a lot of times when people are moving out of poverty, they often live intergenerationally. So often, there are two families living in that same apartment, a parents and some adult kids, which typically means that you're gonna need way more than two parking spaces. Are you gonna put this parking, how many parking places were you planning on building?
We always, you know, we always put two spaces per unit.
Do you think that's gonna be adequate?
And actually, when we drive through our complexes, I mean, there's always extra spaces. So after 2,200 units we have developed.
I wasn't clear from the picture where the parking will be. I know we probably need to go.
We're right now laying out the site plan, so, but, you know, here the next couple of weeks would actually have a prelim site planned out. You know, we have to then go through and submit it to the city for comments, et cetera.
Well, I thank you for the privilege of having the chance to ask questions, and I just have one more comment. I just wanted to ask the city council members that if they decide to draft this letter and recommend the project, that one of the things that they require before they draft the letter is some sort of enforceable and reasonable requirement that the property be maintained properly in accordance with the neighborhood where they're planning to build it.
Hey. Real quick, we've got about seven minutes left, so I'm trying to, try to get everybody that we can.
No, I understand. My name is David Ginardio, and I live in that area. And the question I have is for LDJ. Did y'all look at, it comes to my understanding, when you build a low-income or affordable home for people, and I grew up in a rural part of Georgia and the Carolinas, so I know how that is. Usually, it's built in more of a metropolitan area in the city where, a lady touched on bus lines. Some people that live in the affordable homes don't have cars or cars they can depend on every day. There's no bus in, you know, in the area. Most people that, that I've been around that lived in affordable houses, single mothers or fathers or grandparents, had to walk their children to and from school. There's no schools within walking distance. Have you really looked at a big hole that y'all are building, a facility, an apartment complex on? And I look at it as you don't really have a lot to offer for those people. I have concerns, as another young lady in front of me said, there's railroad tracks, there's water drainage. You know, there's some liability issues there. So I understand you can build back so many feet from the train tracks by law, and I can understand that. But there's still issues there. What if something came off, train come off the tracks, issues? I mean, there's a lot of, I have concerns, what I'm trying to say is for the people you're probably gonna build those homes for. Are they gonna be, you know, I don't look at it as you have enough to even offer them. What they really need to be in a part of town where they can have all of those things from schooling, buses, be able to walk to the store to get something, or whatever.
I'll make this quick, two-part question, I think, there. The first question was about our tenants, you know, getting transportation. Almost majority, this is working families. So they're working, they use, you know, they have their own vehicle to drive to work, drop their kids off to the school. The second question was rail track. We do have a perimeter fence that's six feet tall decorative. So, I mean, the kids gotta jump that fence.
Well, that's what I'm saying. There's enticing things for kids, railroad tracks, water runoff. They could run up to the lake and drown. There's a lot of issues there. Whether they build this place or anything, there's a lot of problems that could, you know, happen.
I'll take your comments into consideration.
Okay.
Two quick. Roger Ford, I live on Grandview. Two quick comments. First one is, I've lived there for 14 years. I've heard maybe three police sirens in 14 years. 80 to 200 issues per those complexes. What's, what's this one gonna be? I'm gonna hear sirens all the time in my neighborhood. I don't want to do that. Second one is, I live on Grandview. People race down Grandview now. Very little police protection for us. Forty miles an hour down my street, maybe 50 at times, all days, all times of the day, no cops. Grandview is the through street from Knickerbocker to Southwest. It isn't Valley View because Valley View isn't complete. That's an inadequacy of the city. Needs to be fixed. If this complex goes in, Grandview gets even more traffic. It gets worse. I don't want to see that happen either.
Hello, I just want to know what.
What's your, what's your name?
My name's Tamara Kleppis, sorry. I just want to know what, where you fall into it. Like, what do you want out of this? Do you want, like, to help the citizens, like, where's your?
When you're looking at the master plan on how this housing is all over, my, my number one thing is property rights, and it's the person that actually owns the property now. And so if you look back at that, which is Scott and Lance, if they're selling the property.
No, 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 no. What's your take? Like, what are you getting out of this?
I'm not getting anything.
Oh, you have, you wouldn't go through this to get nothing.
Yeah, I would. Well, you, first of all, you don't know me very well. I've gone through much worse than this. I, I, in my heart, I believe that I'm doing the right thing.
Right, but you were gonna get something out of it, like the Sand Depot?
What?
Like the Sand Depot thing, like you were gonna gain something.
How was I gonna gain something from the Sand Depot? I was against it.
Exactly, you were against it. You were against it, so you were gonna gain something. It was gonna work in your favor. What do you, what is this gonna do for you?
Nothing. Nothing.
Okay, thanks.
My name is Dana Storch. It's very brief. I want to know if the traffic studies and the water studies, including the new, included the new apartment buildings getting ready to open near Bentwood behind Stripes off of Knickerbocker.
The traffic counts that we conducted were actually on, right there at the properties, they didn't actually go across Knickerbocker into where the new apartments were built. We can do those studies in the future, but those were not included in these since that traffic will exit from their collector onto Knickerbocker to hit the arterial. Now, of course, we do, like the gentleman mentioned on Grandview, we do have issues all over town with people using residential streets as cut-throughs. Don't know that, you know, we can actually stop that with a traffic study or anything like that, but we can if traffic starts becoming an issue, bigger issue on that side of Knickerbocker, then we can actually do counts to see exactly what our traffic flows are prior to.
How about the water flow?
Yes, the water flow study that we did was just, you know, right in that area for this time. Until they actually submit for a permit, we don't actually go into further studies prior to, you know, because anybody can develop any size property, and, you know, we could be spending our wills all the time, so.
Okay. Well, I think the deadline, if I understand, is July. When do those apartments open up, so we can actually measure the water pressure after they open up? So that's all my statement is. Thank you.
My name's Craig Myers, and I live on 19 North Washington. And I'm the only person gonna get less applause than your councilman here. But fact of the matter. But, fact of the matter is that I, I've listened to this, and I, I personally applaud the councilman because he is elected for two things. One is to serve the constituents in his district, and the other is to represent the whole city of San Angelo. And that's true of the mayor and, and all the other council people. And I've had a little bit different experience than most of the folks here. I've been working for about 10 years in terms of drawing neighborhoods together. And I, I've heard a lot of things that are based upon very deeply held convictions, but not real data. Uh, one is, I've, I've heard a lot of mischaracterization of stereotypes about poor people. That would be like saying that wealthy people are represented by all those folks who, prior to the last Great Recession, ran us into the ground because they had money and worked for banks. An awful lot of folks who are in low-income working positions are not in an oversaturated market. I served on a committee of the city manager looking at housing issues in San Angelo prior to the oil boom because it was gonna raise a lot of issues. And developers and realtors and all kinds of folks worked very hard to figure out how to serve the people that were coming in. One of the things that was not dealt with was that people who are at low-income wages don't go up. And we were afraid, and it's been borne out, that there are a whole pile of folks evicted who've worked very hard, paid their rent, reared their children. But if you're on social security, for instance, your rent doesn't get raised. I mean, your, your income doesn't. And there's not an oversaturation of the low and moderate income housing. The second thing is that when we talk about folks in neighborhoods that change and have a variety of housing in them, the experience in San Angelo has not been that property rates, property value goes down. It just doesn't. This is far enough away that I'd be willing to bet, and I don't have a lot of money to bet, so it means something to me, but I'd be willing to bet that, given the proximity of this project to the people whose houses they're talking about, which is not right across the street in most instances, those for-sale signs will not go up. People will not sell at a loss because they like where they live, and this is not going to affect them that much. Excuse me? Yeah. Well, then, I think it will be a boom for the realtors. So, but on the other hand, I just, thank you. I've, I've seen people act out of fear that's not based upon hard data. And after the event occurs, it does not appear to be as bad as it was. In Southland itself, not so many years ago, there was the same kind of meetings, the same kind of conversations, because they were talking about putting group houses for folks who were mentally challenged in their areas. And all kinds of dire predictions were made. And I would bet you that not one out of 10 people here even know where those houses are at this particular time. So, I, I appreciate everybody's concerns, but I have concerns for a lot of people in the whole city of San Angelo that would benefit from this. Thank you.
Thank you. This is gonna be the last, last person that's gonna speak. We're running a little bit over, but I want to make sure we got everybody.
Okay. Hi, Greg Stevens. I live on Oak Mountain Trail. Thank you for having the public forum. The first question, first off, property rights, absolutely. Lance and Scott own the property. They have the right to do it, whatever they want with it. Has the property been sold yet? Have they closed on it?
No.
Okay. That's, that's, I'm hearing questions from the back, so I'm kinda bringing a lot of questions from the back to the front. The question, so you haven't closed on the property, so, so Scott and Lance still own the property?
That's correct.
The question from the back, they've been asking, is what's the property contracted for? How much is they, they trying to sell it to you for?
That's, that's, I can't disclose that information.
I can speak as a broker on that. You would never tell that. I mean, you can't.
Well, but, but what they're saying...
Because if it doesn't go through, you know, the next person wants to know what kind of deal they got.
Right. But, but basically, that's the thing, is that they're asking from the back about, they, it sounded like they, somebody might want to pony up and buy the property, so.
Oh, yeah.
So, that's just kind of the...
And actually, that was brought up, you know, when we went through Butler Farms deal?
Mm-hmm.
About, what was it, about a year ago that we were going through that with the stripes up at the front? And that's what somebody said, you know, go through. But the, the hard part, and again, speaking as a broker on that, is they do have a contract. I have no idea what the timeframe is on that contract. But once you're in that contract, it's hard.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, this is what's being said from the back coming forward, so I figured I'd go ahead and espouse that. I noticed a new fire hydrant at the bottom of College Hills and Valley View. Put in the next day, last day or two?
Yes. During the process of doing the test, we found that that fire hydrant had, or we, we broke the project, broke the fire hydrant in the process of doing the pressure test, so we replaced the fire hydrant. And we're still in the process of repairing that.
Okay. So, I just didn't know if they were actually going for it. Okay. And then, as a broker, just the last question, does this make good business sense? If you're gonna be showing property to people, they're moving to town for the first time, and you take them by, this is low-income housing here, would you be able to sell that property two years from now with low-income housing there, like you would right now in the $250,000 to $400,000 range?
Well, if you, yeah, I mean, there's, there's, there's both sides of this. If, if we go to the lower end, like the 100 to 100 to 200 range on Green Meadows right now, across from Encino Park?
Right.
I've sold, and I went back and looked at this, and they get some supplemental income there, or reduced rates. In the last six years, I've sold five houses on that street, directly across the street from that complex. And I, I think that, I don't know if anybody can name, that's a lot bigger complex than 80 units. It's probably, I would say it's about a 300-unit complex. It's a very large complex, and there were no, there was no decrease in value at all on that property. And it was directly across the street, not kind of around the corner.
Right. But as we're talking about the houses that are in that area of now...
But, you know, the thing that you'd look at is like the apartment complex that's over by Bentwood right now. There's two apartment, apartment complexes right now that are within probably the same distance. And there's, there's for sure houses that are between 200 and 350,000, just on Valley View, those, those patio homes. Actually, there's some that are more than that.
But, I, I guess the point I'm trying to make is that regardless of how we want to feel as people, and the goodness of our heart, we're all Christians and all that. But when you come by, take somebody new to town and say, "Oh, by the way, I'm gonna sell this house for $400,000," and there's low-income development right there, regardless of what is in somebody's heart, don't you, is there not?
Well, we'd never...
Business-wise, it would be a tough sell to get them to buy, to invest it?
Yeah, I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say that I would, that it was low-income. First of all, it's not gonna all be low-income. It's moderate. It's moderate.
Okay. I'm just going by what's on the slides, okay? I'm just, I'm not trying to be argumentative. I'm just going, what's on the slides says low-income.
It's moderate income, it's more affordable housing.
Right. But, you know, they're basically, we had...
And they're gonna see that. I mean, they're gonna see that property right, right there. So, it's just gonna be, how far is it? If you're in a couple, one guy was in Champion Circle, which is there and has the big wall in the front.
Right.
And, you know, I wouldn't have a problem living there myself. I live right next to, I live 200 yards from commercial property, heavy commercial property.
Yeah, but you live over by San Angel Country Club.
Yeah, but, you live by, but if you want to do the distance-wise, you live by Bentwood, the same.
I live a lot further away from Bentwood than you do SAC, but, you know, that's, but I'm not, not trying to argue with you, I'm sorry. But basically, Mr. Crowley had asked the question about, anybody in the room would have bought their property had that been in existence when they bought their property?